... because there will be parents, I think if I complain that it seems like the, you know, folks in this room at least are gonna, you know, are supporting y'all and as, as people come in, um, you know, people complaining about it, um, you know, I'll be able to stand up and feel good about our decision.
So, just to kind of frame, I think, uh, what we have discretion on and what we don't have discretion on. Uh, the universe of, I think it might be helpful at some point to me to have a list of the universe of ways kids can get ready that's not just going to class.
A pretty broad list of courses students can choose from. It includes athletics, fine arts, and CTE. It is only for level three and four courses, meaning the student must have completed band one and two to be able to be eligible to exclude three and four, band three and four. It's only for juniors and seniors, there's a limit of two. In this, students on their report cards and progress reports still get the grade. They still have to meet UIL eligibility through that grade. At the end, on their transcript, it shows pass if the end grade is a seven or higher, it shows fail if it is a sixty-nine or lower. Currently, because I've been talking with one of the principals of Cypher High School, one of the Cypher High Schools, seventeen percent of their juniors and seniors take advantage of this. Seventeen percent. And they have a large high school, there's about eight hundred in each class, junior, seniors. Now, here's the limitation. Over the past two years, NCAA has moved away from how they're accepting pass fail and they've had a different methodology. Beginning this year, and this is on their website, any grade that is pass fail, they are accepting it as that district's lowest passing grade.
So, sixty-nine.
So, first would be a seven, lowest passing grade.
Okay.
So, this, we've got to talk this through a little bit because if seventeen percent of Cypher kids are doing this, how are they navigating this part? So, that's the work to do there, on the final transcript that shows pass fail.
That's cool.
Yeah.
This option is only two credits, is that two credits per year?
Two credits at all.
Two, your junior year, two your senior.
Two, one your junior, one your senior. Two credits.
Two credits per semester.
Yeah, so four semester, two courses. All right, so, do you have a question?
Well, I, you, you mentioned NCAA, I'm, I'm trying to figure out why is that for all of them?
If you're gonna go out and play sports.
And you're, and you're NCAA sponsored.
But if you're gonna play sports, it's because you're getting a scholarship, right?
No.
Uh, your eligibility for scholarships sometimes depends on what your GPA is.
That's true.
So, if I wanted to go to Vanderbilt and I took a pass fail course, that's gonna not be good for me.
That's great.
Is that what I'm hearing from you?
All right, but I have more work to do on that. I'm telling you it's on, on their website, okay. The middle option, this wasn't on, uh, this is fairly new, we haven't talked through this. Uh, it says Cypher, I'm sorry, that's my error and copy paste, this is from Highland Park. So, in this, this is a much, the way they do it, they have a much narrower, uh, class list, there's only ten classes on there. Athletics, a few fine arts, not all, and journalism. It's really interesting, but it's only ten classes. It's only junior, seniors, it's the same limit to two courses. And here, students complete a form through counseling office. Uh, they may have to meet a GPA criteria, I can't recall. Um, and they get the same, they get grades on progress reports, report cards, they have to meet UIL eligibility through that. On their transcript, the grade, whether it's an eighty-nine, ninety-five, is on the transcript, it's not pass fail like Cypher, it is the grade. But when they go to configure the final GPA, it's excluded. Does that make sense? So, it's similar to the way Cypher is doing, but slightly different. Those two options are, are similar in scope. This next one is, uh, much broader in scope. So, if this part district is for net consolidated, I think Friendswood, you said had gone down this path as well, it's pretty common, like, state of Florida, the core. This is, they're going, different districts are talking about this. For English, for math, for science, for social studies credit. If you took, if you took six science courses, the top four are included. That's it. Which means some of the concerns about multiplier or not multiplier go away because GPA is only based on. Now, a limitation here is. This becomes a longer optional. It is equitable, every. In conversations with the high school, they feel like those first two options are attainable in the short term. This next one, while intriguing, would need a lot longer runway to have conversations with the staff, with the community, think through ripple effects, but I didn't want to put it in front of you. So, those are three possible options to get to our goal of, um, removing barriers for kids taking a course. Now, this is the last thing I'm. Things, remember I said I still have work to do. We need that campus. About the scope of eligible courses. This is the way three different communities have figured out what works for them, we need to figure out what's gonna work around heights. So, do we want it to be narrow in scope like Highland Park? Or do we want to say, yeah, CTE, go ahead, be a part of the video screen board class? Um, that's a question for us, eligible levels? Is it only going to be three and four? Or can a student their senior year say, I want to take culinary one and have that excluded? That goes through the grade levels, the process, how would, when would we start this? Um, and is it going to be a policy or regulation? Where would we land? We have to figure out what, is it a policy or regulation update and what would a communication plan look like? So, when I say, like, there is some work to do around this, it's exciting, it's intriguing, but we do have to talk through some, um, maybe grading pieces.
And so, the non-gradual, what I keep putting on the table with Jenny is that we have, um, very purposefully articulated our profile of honor, right? Who we want our graduates to be upon graduation. And so, we cannot adopt a new way of operation that would not promote that whole child piece, right? And so, there's some of this that, that detracts from that. And so, um, my ask, uh, for Jenny and the team at the high school, I want to see actual kids and how this shakes down. You know, I want to kind of see student A right now as a senior, what this would look like in option one, option two, but I, I want to see a wide stamp of students. I want to see students that are in the top ten, but I want to see students who, you know, really benefit from the hundred and eight hundred, or the hundred and five, or that, right? And so, they, when she says she's got lots of work to do, like, she does, but I've got an urgency to get this moving too. Like, I don't feel like we need to drag our feet with it either. And so, the, the goal is for her to be able to come back to y'all in March with the recommendations. So, we're gonna walk you through kind of her journey in, in different. And so, I'm just asking you to continue talking to me about what you're thinking about, so that I can be sure that that's part of the side base conversation that I'm taking place with.
And I think that the spirit of it is not, is, is about the whole child. It's because, you know, we, I want, we, we've added all these cool classes over there that I would want kids to have the freedom to take, whether it's that highest achieving kid or. I take that class, is it gonna hurt my GPA? Or if I take that class, is it? Exploration. And, you know, can I take, I, I would love to find out what rocketry is about, but I'm scared. I don't know if I'm gonna be good at rocketry. I, I'm not that great at math, but I'd really love to take the rocketry class, but it might kill me. So, if they had kind of that option of doing that without worrying about how I'm gonna do in the class, I mean, I don't think anybody's gonna use it as an opportunity to blow off the class, or I hope not. That idea is more, it's, it's an option. If you have these kids that are confident about taking, you know, the sewing class or whatever and, and, and getting a hundred in the class, great. But I, so, it comes from a place of giving kids the opportunity to really try some things that they otherwise wouldn't try. That's where my, my.
Yeah. Well, so, two things, and I'm obviously gonna stay out of the weeds, because there's a lot of weeds we can get into right now, I'm not gonna. So, I have two considerations. Number one, especially with regard to option three, when you're gonna say, when you're gonna focus on the, the equity of the solution, when you narrow down the options to four classes, or four subjects and four classes, whatever it is, there will be an arms race on those four classes. And that is not equitable. Because those with resources will gather their support and they will just focus like lasers on those four classes. And so, that, to me, I have a, a wondering on, is that truly equitable or not? I get the idea that we're all agreeing on the, the core subjects we're gonna pursue, but I think once you narrow it down, those are the resources. Excuse me, ponder on. The other one that I'm. You know, what do grades reflect? And. On that is great. That's true, and it should be true, then how can we provide something for those who want to achieve? And so, achievement is comparative, and people hate it, but it's true, right? Elon Musk doesn't want to be the third person on Mars, Intel doesn't want to have the second fastest microchip, Pfizer doesn't want the third most effective vaccine. Achievement is comparative. And so, what else can we provide people who want to achieve? To me, what I love to communicate to people is, we have a million options for your kid, get thirty-six hours of college credit in high school. Here are the options, go! You want something to race after? Here is something to race after. And so, I, I, I want to have this conversation, but I also want to provide an avenue for the people who are gonna say, well, but I'm in this to achieve, you're taking away my option to achieve, so now what do I do? Uh, a lot of times, that comparative achievement, like, pushes rigor into the system, so I want to find another way to provide that avenue that doesn't necessarily create all of the gaming, the system issues that a GPA situation has. And so, I, I'm not driving the process, but I love a wondering on, how can we think about that to provide that? Because there are people who do want to achieve, and so, how can we give them an avenue to do it? So that they don't just rail like, oh, this isn't.
I usually look at my option three, I'm lost.
I'm talking about all of it, right? So, if we're going to take away ability for children, not children, but for, well, yeah, for children, because I'm speaking for myself, like, I was looking at grades and, I mean, classes when I was a kid, and I was like, well, I want to take the hardest classes, but I also want to beat everybody, right? And I don't know if that's healthy, it's probably not, but there's, but there is, but there is an avenue of, because it's a.
But it's an option.
It's a personality trait to provide that.
I get that, but if it's an option, so we're not taking that option away from those high achievers.
So, what I'm saying is, the second you open the box on talking about GPA, you will have a segment of the population, like, rail against you saying, this was my opportunity to get ahead by competing with you to get better grades than you, this was my opportunity, you're taking it away from me. So, to have a parallel conversation of, they refocus on.
Yeah, I think you need to look at the rest of the class. And I think you'll feel better. We're talking about elective.
We're talking about basketball. So.
We're not talking about.
But the wondering remains the same, because I would prefer to shift the whole conversation on people aren't pursuing good grades, they're pursuing mastery of subjects to get further down the road. If I can get a kid out of high school and he's a sophomore in college, that's phenomenal. That's so much wasted time that's gone. You think about college, like, for, you know, kids graduate from heights and they're high achieving, they go to college for four years, you ask them the question when they're seniors in, in high school, and the question when they're seniors in college, they say the same thing. I don't know what I want to do with my life. That's four years of wasted time in college. Let's accelerate the kids that want to be accelerated. Give them the avenue. So, that's my soapbox on that.
All right. Stacy.
Okay.
We gotta wrap this up fairly quick.
Yes, okay, well, I'm really excited about this. I, I, I hope that we are gonna choose some version of one of these things. I think it's, I think the idea of being able to dabble in something that you may not be good at. And yes, maybe that seventeen percent that have a hundred plus are the most focused on for, for purposes of this, I don't think that's a reason not to do it though. And I also want to say that I personally teach a. I do it because I want law students who are not good at writing to take my course. So, not the seventeen percent, not the exact opposite. They would never take my class if they were, if they were a graded class, because they would, they would know, I'm not gonna go to the grade in Professor Sharp's class, okay? So, really, I do think a policy like this can help students who are struggling in topics to feel brave enough to take something they need improvement on. So, even if the students don't realize that, it's you guys are going and talking to folks, that, that can be a, a side effect from it. So, I have personal experience with that, it's, it is a very, very hard course that they would never be brave enough to do. So, so it's the kind of idea of dabbling and being the whole child, but also the, you know, trying to improve skills that are really weak. Um, the last thing I wanted to say.
That's the case that y'all want to go with.
Right, well, also. Things on your plate. And so, I, you know, it's up to you how you're gonna handle this, I, I know you want to go back to the school and talk, but I mean, I don't think you have to talk to every single stakeholder about exactly how they're gonna feel if their class is, or is not pass fail. I know you want buy-in, I know you're gonna handle this, and I, I leave it to you, but I, I just, I would like to give, you know, y'all motivation to say, we're gonna do a version of this if, if, you know, the folks in here and you guys are on board, and not, and not spend so many hours on your part specifically, having to go get every single person and, you know, that's, that's my, so I know you guys are so thorough.
The high school team is the side base team, which has some teachers, students, and parents on it. So, it is a way to get stakeholder input through one already existing group.
Okay. I, I just, I'll, and push them when I'm trying to, I have you in mind of just how much, both of you, you know, how much you guys have. And so, I just.
Thank you.
Idea being, like, if you're excited about this too, and you want to have me get happen, that, you know, you know, we can try a version of this for now, and then, if we're eventually moving to that other column, that's not what I personally want right now, but I mean, that's, I agree, that's not where we are, I don't think, as a group yet. And so, kind of hang out in this area on the left and try, try a version and see. Yeah, I, okay, last thing. I really don't love the level three, level four, um, specification because of the dabbling aspect. If we want to encourage students to dabble and be, to do the whole child as the focus, then that's the exact opposite of what we want. We want them to take, you know, fashion design number one, or rocketry number one, not three and four, that's, so to me, that doesn't serve the purpose of what I, I thought when I talked to the folks on the table, what they were wanting.
Clay. Um, so, I have a few comments. Um, the, on option three and four, about four, before, before, what, what, and I think he did was more correct, uh, I think that that would, if, if, if that's even, uh, an option, we've got to figure out the online. Pretty smart parent that I'm gonna take half of those courses online, right?
So, anyway.
No. Yeah. No, this is, I'm talking about the, the GPA.
Right, and so, you're saying if we were to get it through, we need to figure out.
If you go to the four, a four, you can't take any of that online.
Right. If you're saying your core GPA, your core class is your core course.
And, and so.
We can't, but that was the question I asked before. We don't have online. Well, we don't have the option in the online to make that decision, right?
But, to be looking at.
Yeah, so, we can't really credit by exam, but, uh, so, your point's taking a look into.
Yeah, okay. So, uh, my, the next thing is that, I, I think we were talking about the pass fail option, I think the spirit of the pass fail option can, can do both things, okay? What you're concerned about and what you're concerned about. And that is, uh, let's say there is a student that, um, you know, uh, doesn't want to take this course because they're, they're nervous about rocketry, um, you know, and so, they could take it pass fail, but I think if we lend them the option that, like, let's say there's a student that is rocketry expert, and they want to take it because they want the one hundred. The hundred, so I don't know why we can't just have the option, A or B, um, and, and, and you could take it pass fail or not pass fail. Um, and so, but the, 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 the most important thing for me. And so, I will, at some point, and I'll talk about this, we, I, I want to suspend. Against it, and I'm happy to debate it. Highland Park, they have these options, they do not, they stopped ranking their kids twelve years ago.
They don't rank them at all.
No.
They have to do top.
They, they have to do what's required by the law.
Right.
Okay? So, I propose that out of all heights, does what's required by the law, because. The first few weeks of their sophomore year into holy, oh my gosh, I've got to get into all these details, I'm gonna be a loser. And it doesn't matter if, if they're, I don't know. That they are three thirty out of three fifty. It's actually a miracle.
I think that's a good point, I think that's something for another day.
I, I, Ron, with all due respect, I don't want another day. I've been.
Down on agenda, I don't want to argue with you about it, but I think there's a way to go about it. We just have a whole lot that we're trying to get through today, and this is a whole different, I agree with you.
Yeah.
I totally agree with you. But I don't think with what we've got to get through today.
Well, okay.
Because I think this is a big issue that I agree should be part of this conversation.
Okay, so, I, I'll say this again, all right? Um, I've been told for eight months that in January is when we talk about what I want to talk about. No problem. All right? This is our one meeting in January, okay? And now I'm being told that we can't talk about it because we have to hurry up.
No.
I'm not doing that, Ron.
I'm, I'm telling you.
I'm telling you why I got elected, because I went and told all these people that this is what I'm passionate about. There are so many people that are passionate about this, and we need to do something about it.
Clay, on the agenda that was set ahead of time as part of the board book was grading. This is grading. Class rank, although related to grading, is a different thing. I'm not telling you this is gonna be discussed, I'm telling you that it's different from what we're discussing right now, and we've got.
Right, but I think it plays a part in.
But no one else is ready to discuss it. That's the reason we have to have it on an agenda.
Okay.
And because you're, you want the administration to address, I agree with your point.
Okay.
But let's, let's ask them to come back to us.
No problem, I'm, I'm good with it too, I, I just.
And I'm glad you raised it.
I, I, I'm just, I'm, I, I, I feel like. Can we talk about it?
Let's discuss it as, as our February long term, if everyone wants to discuss it and if the administration can be ready. I agree, if it, I think that would be a good conversation.
So, I think it's important to say to you, we have been discussing it administratively, like, uh, from the, you know, we like to be creating some discussion. Part of the.
And this may be something we're ready to discuss, is just the, the finite issue of, really, is it healthy?
Sure.
I, I guess, I guess my whole, my whole opinion is, is that it, 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 to me, it seems very simple. We either do or we don't do it. I don't understand why it's, you know, we either do it. Or we don't. I, I don't understand why it's so. Right, but what I'm saying is the law says, so, when.
I agree with that.
The law says that you can put on there, you're in the top twenty-five percent, you're not in the top twenty-five percent. That's what the law requires.
And maybe that's a good.
And that's, if they're out of the top twenty-five percent, it will be shown, we will have done our job, and they have some ground to manow, you know?
Well, but the thirty percent, thir, the thirty percent pile needs to know that they're twenty-eighth, twenty-ninth, and they're just close. I mean, they're, this is a whole, I mean, this is a whole conversation, and I, I think we're.
We're, we're.
That we, yeah, right, I mean, I think we need to be able to have that, there's probably eight to nine different views on this at the table, and we don't, I mean, you guys aren't prepared to, let's get it on the agenda on there.
So, we'll discuss it February, David.
Yep.
Quick things, I don't want to be misconstrued, because I know it's happened in the past, I'm all for revaluing all of this. I want to be clear on that. I typically just say, wondering's free to take on and to write down. Uh, two, two. The last experience I had with pass fails in college, which is voluntary, not mandatory, high school is mandatory, college is voluntary, and so, a lot of kids take a class pass fail to blow it off. I mean, that's what they do in college, they take a class, pass, pass fail, and blow it off. We need rigorous professional development so that the child in rocketry who is pursuing it for a grade and is working very diligently, versus the kid who's in it for a pass fail and may not be as diligent, well, I'm trying. So then, can I, so we need an instructor who is able to navigate that dynamic to make sure that it's not a detriment to either student. So, that's a wondering. But then also, you know, and I appreciate we're reading up the grading issue, obviously you know all this needs to be in that context. It's a very difficult issue to solve, which is one of the reasons why I like the context of, hey, get a lot of credits if you're looking for something to achieve with, another carrot to provide people who want to achieve. That's all.
Thank, thank you, and, 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 and I totally agree with what you're saying. And, 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 and so, all I'm saying is, is that I don't care if we're up till four in the morning, we're gonna talk about it. And, 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 and that's my whole point, is that we have to talk about it. We have, I, I don't care about we have to go somewhere, or we have to, I'm here, I spent a lot of time to be on the board, and, and if we have to stay up till six in the morning to discuss it and knock it out, then we will. And that's how I do it. That's all it is.
I, I don't think anyone agrees with you, Clay. All right. Anything else, Dr. Walker?
No, thank you.
Thank you.
I, I genuinely appreciate the feedback, the one thing I.
There's a lot of it.
No, I, I, the one thing I've learned in walking through all these grading symposiums and being kind of the face of grading is that it is an emotional issue. Anytime you evaluate and judge, which is what a grade is, if we say it's a patient tool, but a child's looking at us, judgment, family's looking at a judgment, it has a strong emotional balance to it. And so, that just means you have to navigate the waters. As much as we would like it to be black and white, if you've got seven questions right, it just, it is surrounded by emotion. And so, going slow is, that's where to go fast. Thank you.
All right. Moving on to item B, SB three overview, and I understand we have a person who signed up for the citizens to be heard, April Duval. April, feel free to come up, uh, quickly, the, just so you understand, couple of things. One, you'll have three minutes to speak. By law, because this is Texas Open Meetings Act, we are not allowed to ask questions, to have any response. The other thing is just, please don't mention personnel or students by name, just, it's a public setting, it's being recorded or broadcast, so.
Awesome.
When is that before report? Oh, you mean.
It's being broadcast, yeah, so.
Not by us, yeah.
Yeah.
Always calling me out.
Oh, yes, I don't think it'll take three minutes.
Okay, you're warning, warning.
Okay, great.
All right, and with that, begin when you're ready.
I just want to thank you for all your hard work. I just want to thank you for all your hard work. Trying to think that happens for our kids. I do think my kids need to be here face to face and keeping schools open is my priority. But, so the bill that y'all are going to be discussing in a minute has to do with current events or controversial issues of public policy or social affairs. But it doesn't apply to historical events. However, those terms are not defined. It did come some from H D thirty-nine seventy-nine before it became the Senate Bill. And that one said that a teacher who chooses to discuss a widely debated and currently controversial issue of public policy or social affairs must, the best of the teacher's abilities strive to explore the topic from diverse and continuing perspectives without giving difference to any one perspective. So that gives us a little bit of a framework about where the bill's coming from. S B three clarified the language and directs that teachers shall explore the topic objectively and in a manner free from political bias. But good teaching has always included teaching subjects free from political bias. And, you know, the bill specifically mentions critical race theory, but that's not something that's ever taught at this level. That's college level, that's law school. If a parent complains about this issue though, because some of the things, they've been muddied in the media, parents are throwing around terms they don't know what they mean, they don't know what the law is, the issue is going to be determined by the school board. Then the decision can be appealed to the commissioner of education, but that's unlikely to move forward. So the board is going to be protecting the teacher. Hold on a minute, okay. So I think one way that you can protect the budget is by protecting your teachers. Teachers will come to a district that pays less if they trust the administrators on the board. My kids have read books from diverse perspectives, historical novels, you know, starting in rocketry. And I think protecting those discussions, those higher level thinking, so that parents know their kids are being challenged to integrate material from multiple sources. They're having deep discussions and that the teachers feel protected and inspired to have those discussions in their classes. One of the ways you keep staff without pulling over the budget. As long as the teachers trust you to protect them and that they get to have those stimulating, rewarding discussions in their classroom, they will stay without the extra money. But if they can't trust you, you're going to have to go over budget and increase what you're paying them. So I hope you'll stand up.
Thank you very much. We appreciate your comment.
Yay.
Okay. S B three overview, take it away.
Do you know anything about this, the F P S? It keeps going low and that's why my thing ended. So I'm trying to figure out how to keep it on going. Look good. I'll take a jump. Have fun at work.
Hello, this is Ryan. How's Ryan? So Senate Bill three passed in the second legislative session and in the media it was referred to. On December the second. And so we wanted to brief you, number one, because it had been a topic of conversation in the general public. And so we started our conversation with teachers last week and will finish them up this week. Target conversation and will have more general conversations with the entire staff in subsequent weeks. The point being, we wanted folks to understand what the law said, not kind of what you heard the law said. Now, what I'm using are slides put together by Tom Kinnon, who are, we're not an education law firm in Texas. And they said, we confused the slide, so I'm using their slide. Now, so the overview essentially is just information for you to know. The first thing that they clarify, this is actually from a past publication, is to clarify that critical race theory is something that exists in higher ed and that that term never really appears in this bill, nor does it appear in any of our state teacs, which is our curriculum, the Texas essential knowledge field. Now, in the first. Passed and for while folks were calling back the. When Senate Bill three passed, that repealed and replaced the previous bill. And so whatever ended up coming through in Senate Bill three is in effect the bill. And people call it critical race theory. Now, this overview, when you're thinking about the bill, it helps to think about it in terms of the affected parties, which are districts, teachers, and students. And then there's impacted areas, which is social state curriculum, classroom sessions, in-court credit, counseling, private funding, student debt. Now, the first thing about the social state curriculum, we know the case tonight, nothing has changed. And so the law does require that state boards to review and revise the teacs, but not for this year, for the teachers.
I remember that.
Yeah.
How do I turn this on?
And the bill also requires T E A to ensure that we teach civics education as part of the curriculum. Again, that will be handed down to us for next year, so we'll be keeping an eye on that for the spring and then the summer. Now, in addition, the State Board of Education is directed to adopt certain essential knowledge and skills into that curriculum. I don't know if they read all of them, but they, the bill gives you a list and they're essentially based on civics education. And so there's all these things. The second kind of glance at is basic civics things. And so it's the State Board of Education's job is to how you put that into the teacs.